Pull off right now. She thought the noise would be distracting. She also mentioned she's read all the emails and social media posts and is in favor of a ban.
Okay, guys, just heads up to get into that very shortly.
What was the Carol, what was the final on on Counselor Shaw or City Manager Reimer?
The last I heard she was going to be on a plane at 5:30 or something and is unable to make it.
Okay, thank you.
Correct. Yeah, thanks, Carol.
All right, are we all ready to go?
I think so.
I'm going to start the stream. We're good to go.
All right, I will call this special meeting to order. City Recorder Craig, please call roll.
Counselor Goodhouse.
Here.
Counselor Newton. Council President Lube.
Here.
Counselor Shaw. Mayor Snyder.
Here.
Youth Counselor Nog.
Here.
All right, thank you, and welcome to Youth Counselor Nog. Good to see you. And it is July 1st. You're getting a meeting on your first day in your role.
And an emergency meeting.
Yeah, how about that? All right, I'm gonna make an opening, I think some opening remarks here to set up the discussion. I think probably everyone watching and everyone that is logged in and participating in the council meeting is aware of the extreme weather that we've had over the last couple of weeks and particularly last weekend. That has raised concern among many of our community members about the upcoming Fourth of July holiday and our general community and country's practice of using large quantities of various devices that are on fire as they're being used or fireworks. I have called this special meeting to, first of all, recognize that there is a, from my perspective, an emergency related to this and that our community is demanding that we at least evaluate what we should be doing, if anything, to protect our community, given these unusual circumstances. I'm gonna, I'm gonna set up the discussion a little bit in a moment. But I did want to just indicate that I think the first order of business and City Attorney Rahala, maybe you can walk us through this, but are we needing to ratify my emergency declaration before we then discuss what action we may want to take? Or does the declaration need to include what actions we're taking?
So, Council, I would recommend that it decide, that you decide what actions you want to take, and then the ratification of the emergency declaration would include those specific measures that Council deemed appropriate.
Okay.
Yeah, the way the declaration was drafted was very rough, based on whatever council, whatever steps Council found appropriate.
Okay, so we will not act separately. What I'm gonna now summarize, just to, again, to to set up the discussion and to get everybody thinking about, I think, the bounds that we need to be thinking about. First of all, we have a summary of the feedback, and I'm looking to bring it up here on my computer. The feedback that we've received thus far is overwhelmingly asking us to act and do something, and specifically to, I think the request is to ban, quote, fireworks. There's not been really a definition of what fireworks are. I'm curious to know, that's gonna be one of the things that I'm thinking about, is what is a firework? You know, when we're, when we're talking about this conversation. So, as of 3:00 PM today, we had received 152 different communications about, about the use of fireworks and a fireworks ban, and 94% of the people that communicated were in favor of a ban, and approximately 6% were, were not supportive of a ban. Again, not necessarily a technical definition of what a firework is or isn't in this. So, this is, this is more just general communication. The reasons people were in favor were high fire risk, concern that's now started to come about with people, with other communities banning them, that people may come to Tigard to light fireworks because they are not allowed to do so in other places, and then air quality effects. Those were the three sort of themes in favor, the top themes in favor. Themes against were that this was an overreaction, that it was a reactionary measure and late, too late to implement, and that people have freedom to celebrate. So, those were, those were themes. About seven, 67 of the communications came in via social media, 49 came in by email, 27 via a web form submission on our website, and then nine phone calls. So, that, that's sort of the feedback that we've gotten from the community thus far. Things that I think we need to be thinking about, and what I'm gonna push to start our discussion, is I do believe we need to continue to, you know, seek science and the truth. And I'm gonna be asking our professionals from TVFNR and from the Tigard Police Department to be providing input and, and answering some basic questions about both what the empirical evidence is to support various actions and also the sort of practical reality. There were a fair number of people that were concerned that illegal fireworks, which I think it's kind of common sense, the ones that are, that are illegal in Oregon are even more dangerous and prone to causing a problem than ones that are typically legal in Oregon. And so, I, one of the themes of feedback, too, was that enforcement doesn't even happen with those in a normal year. So, how in the world are, if you can't do that, which we do get complaints about, how are you gonna, how are you gonna enforce this? And if you're not gonna be enforcing it, then what's the point? Or is it just a communications tool? So, you know, those, those are some of the things to be thinking about. Think about, in my mind, thinking about what is the definition of a firework? And why don't we start with that? City Attorney Rahala, is there a definition of what a firework is?
There is a definition in ORS 480. There is a definition. A firework means consumer fireworks, display fireworks, exempt fireworks, pyrotechnic articles, special effects, and other pyrotechnic devices that are capable of producing audible, visual, mechanical, or thermal effects through combustion, degradation, or detonation. So, they say, that is the definition. Fireworks do not mean a canned flame, a bomb, a flame in the john, or other device that is designed to keep the flame and thermal radiation in close proximity to the device. Those are actually definitions.
Okay, so it's pretty broad. Pretty broad definition. Anything that sort of sparkles and makes noise with fire?
Essentially, yes.
Okay. So, we'll start with that. What I'd like to walk us through now is a, a report from, and I think the first professional report out I'd like to hear is from Tuolton Valley Fire and Rescue, and perhaps, is it Chief Halman? Would you, would you, thank you and welcome. Thank you for attending our meeting, and, you know, we're looking for you for advice in particular about the, and, and we want to be having a science-based discussion here and an evidence-based discussion, at least from my perspective. Certainly, people's feelings matter, too, but, you know, when we're talking about potentially making a decision to limit people's freedoms, I feel pretty strongly that that at least needs to base, be based somewhat in science. So, I'm gonna be trying to push us towards that. So, Chief, could you share with us what Tuolton Valley Fire and Rescue's official position and your professional recommendation is about both what are traditionally illegal fireworks in Oregon and the risks that may pose this year? And then also contrast that with what risks and recommendations you might have about fireworks that are traditionally legal in Oregon but may pose greater risk this year because of current weather conditions, et cetera?
Sure. Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor Snyder, members of the council. I'm Les Halman with Tuolton Valley Fire and Rescue, and thank you for asking us to be here tonight. With the record-breaking weather and drought conditions, Tuolton Valley Fire and Rescue is urging people not to use fireworks this year. We're asking them to attend professional shows, watch an event on television, or celebrate Independence Day without fireworks. Just for the council's information, Fourth of July is normally the busiest time of the year for our emergency responders and dispatchers, and that's even without the record temperatures and drought that we're seeing right now. The laws related to fireworks in Oregon can be complex and confusing, as you're already aware of. As a rural fire protection district, TVFNR does not have the legal authority to ban the use of retail or what is known as legal fireworks, which is what your attorney just described to you. Please know that we're not advocating for a specific decision from you, and I hope you understand that. We're rather simply here to show our support to the city, provide you for information. And we fully understand that you, as a council, must do what you feel is in the best interest of your community, and we're gonna always respect and, and support whatever that decision is. As far as the effects of fireworks right now, I think there's, there's, all of you are very aware of the drought condition we're in. We're in historic drought conditions in Oregon. Just for your information, I'm also an incident commander with the state. I've been deployed throughout Oregon and California with wildfires. In the last five years, the wildfire activity, it's, it's been a very obvious difference. We're seeing a remarkable difference in weather in Oregon and how fires react into that weather. And certainly fireworks are gonna, are gonna accelerate that. So, anything that's going to start a fire, and fireworks certainly have that potential to start a fire, causes us great concern. And that's the reason that, based on the current conditions, we immediately started pushing out that message and asking the public, please do not use fireworks. There's other ways to enjoy the Independence Day without using fireworks. And, Mr. Mayor, I'll, I hope that's helping get the discussion going, and certainly we'll answer any questions you have.
Yeah, so is your, I mean, I understand TVFNR's official position is that TVFNR doesn't have the authority to ban things. I guess I'm asking, you know, you, you essentially are our, our staff from a fire perspective. So, what is your professional recommendation to this council?
Well, we're gonna support whatever your council decides you want to do, but certainly it falls right in line with our message that we do not want the public to use fireworks. And if you feel going to a ban, we're gonna support you banning fireworks.
And you, you seem to be supportive of the city of Tuolton's ban after they enacted it.
That's correct. And, and, Mr. Mayor, I hope you understand, we represent 11 cities and four counties, and, and those different cities have different opinions. So, we're very careful about advocating. We're more to support and inform. And again, at the end of the day, whatever decision is you, as a council, decide you need to do, we're gonna support that decision.
Okay, well, we, can you speak to, you know, I, I guess I want people to be thinking about the actual risk here. I've heard what you've said. I also wanna, I, I wanna push on a couple things to help stimulate the council's thinking on this. Is there, or are there safe conditions from your perspective under which fireworks that are legal in Oregon could be used safely? I guess I, I want to ask that question because, you know, again, when we're talking about restricting people's freedoms, I take that really seriously. And I, I'm thinking about a situation where somebody's, you know, got impervious surface and not near any flammable structure within 30 or 40 feet, and they're using a legal firework and have a hose right next to them. I guess I just want to really understand what the real risk is there.
In a normal year, or in a, in normal weather patterns, our concerns aren't gonna be as high. And, and our concern right now is that because of the drought, even a person that's doing their best to, to use the fireworks in a safe manner, there's always that potential of a spark. And, and, and just to show how volatile sparks are, we're currently in those conditions where if a person throws a cigarette out the window, it can start a wildfire. So, even a person that's, you know, the wind picks up, you're, you're using a legal firework, and, and you've got everything in place, there's still that chance it's gonna get into an area and start a fire immediately. So, we're hypersensitive, and I think you keep saying the science. The science certainly shows right now, we have a reason to be hypersensitive to fireworks. And then you add in, just like I said, our normal response activity in the Fourth of July is already accelerated. Just in 2020, just for an example, we know of 18 fires in, in 2020 that were specifically caused by fireworks. So, we always, in Fourth of July, even in a good year, we're gonna see a fairly, I don't wanna use the word substantial, but we're gonna see an uptick in fires that are specifically caused by fireworks.
So, is there evidence that, and then I'm gonna open this to the council, asking, asking you particular questions. Is there evidence that suggests that a ban on the types of fireworks that are legal in Oregon in drought conditions will result in fewer fires?
There's no evidence to prove that because this is such a, this, we're breaking, we're in historic times, I guess, Mr. Mayor, be the way I'd say it. This is new territory for us, if that's fair. I will say that we've seen by banning fireworks, we're already seeing some reaction, and that reaction is, was being reported to us, retail sales are falling dramatically. And we're also aware some stores are actually removing fireworks from the floor because of their concern of the dangers of fireworks.
Okay, thank you, Chief. The way I want to do this, Council, is I'm hoping to at least start by letting each of you ask whatever questions you want of each of our experts. So, I know we will get to talking to Chief McAlpine about enforcement in a moment, but who's got questions about fire behavior, fire evidence, et cetera? Council President Lube.
Yeah, I, you know, my question is, I know specifically around this, this Fourth of July holiday, you know, fireworks are something that, you know, in my neighborhood, I've, I've heard span multiple days. Is this something where, you know, the, the potential resolution that we have says through July 9th, and obviously that doesn't end the historic drought that we're in, and we have concerns for, you know, the entire summer? So, is this something where you're asking the public just not to use it for this holiday experience, or are you asking them not to use it for the season?
So, President, Mayor Snyder, so our message right now is really around the holiday itself. Very well taken. And, and I guess we have to, there's some hope that maybe our weather pattern will change, and, and we're kind of playing it case by case right now. We know there's gonna be an uptick in use of fireworks around the Independence Day holiday, and that's why we're focusing on it right now. I do believe some of the resolutions that have been passed by other cities expanded out past the fourth. Some of them have just a holiday dates.
Thank you.
Counselor Goodhouse.
With the, the background, I was trying to raise my hand, and it was disappearing. A, a question I have, you mentioned last year, I think it was, there was 18 fires from fireworks. Do you have any idea of those 18, which were from legal or which were from illegal? The reason I'm asking is because, you know, obviously, as the Mayor Snyder said, you know, the, the legal fireworks have more of a potential to cause a lot more danger and problems. And if we're looking at something where it's illegal already, if we ban, you know, people are using those already when it's illegal. So, I'm just curious, the difference between the two?
Thank you, Counselor Goodhouse. That's a very good question, Mayor Snyder. Unfortunately, our statistics don't break out the two. The reason is, we follow what's called the National Fire Incident Reporting System. And when we report that a fire started by a firework, there's not a, there's not an option of illegal or, or legal. So, we don't know those. I am aware of, of specifically a fire in Lake Oswego last year that cost also half million dollars in damage. It was legal fireworks that were improperly disposed, and we see that a lot. So, I am aware of a high amount of the fires that are legal fireworks, but I'm also aware of some that are illegal, and unfortunately, our statistics don't break those out for us.
I'm gonna add a scenario that happened in my neighborhood that resulted in a, in a pretty significant fire while I was not home one year in July 4th. This is in the last three years, but to the, to just illustrate what the chief just shared, some very, what I would consider some very responsible neighbors who had doused their legal fireworks in water and then placed them in a dumpster that was on site for construction, ended up being a full-on, full-sized pride disposal dumpster fire. Like, we're talking the big one, like a drop box, full fire at like 3:00 in the morning after doing responsible things with them. So, I, I guess I will just share that things happen even when you're, even when you're being responsible and doing things like dousing them in water. How that changed and what the effect was, I don't know, but it woke a bunch of people up. I can tell you that. Counselor Goodhouse, did you have any more questions, or I'll go to Youth Counselor Nog? Okay, Youth Counselor Nog, go ahead.
Um, I know that recently there was an insane heat wave going on, but recently, I think there was a tropical weather pattern that brought in cooler temperatures. And if there is predictions for rain in the future, would like rain help eliminate some of the risk that causes wildfires?
Thank you, Counselor Nog. Very good question. And unfortunately for us right now, the Northwest Coordinating Center, which covers wildfires in Washington and Oregon, has predicted for Washington and Oregon, July, August, and September are gonna be abnormally high months for wildfire activity in our two states. And they're not, the problem is, the drought that we're in, when you hear that word, historic drought, it, it's, we're so far behind on rainfall. I, I don't, I, I would say it would take a monsoon, for lack of better words, going for, you know, a month. We, the, the little bit of rainfall that we're getting now, it, it goes away very quickly. An, an example that Mayor Snyder was giving to that firework, that's, we see that same behavior in, in brush piles. People think they've got a brush pile extinguished, they leave it. We've actually seen brush piles come back alive weeks later because there's a spark deep in that brush pile, things begin drying out, and the wind shifts. And I would imagine that's what happened with those fireworks in that dumpster. They thought they were wet enough, but you're talking about, some of those fireworks are pretty well packed, and there was probably a spark deep inside it overnight. The wind started picking up and got it going again. So, again, Counselor Nog, unfortunately, right now, the predictions are not good, and we don't expect any change, at least until the fall.
Okay, let's, let's transition to enforcement. Chief McAlpine, would you like to maybe speak to what a typical Fourth of July looks like from an enforcement perspective, which I, I know from prior years, we, we get complaints about this every year. You and I both get lots of complaints about this every year. It's one of my favorite parts of being mayor. And last year, I remember, we had quite a few. I, I recall that. So, can you speak to what reality is? I mean, if, if we were to enact a complete ban, what is our capacity and capability to enforce that compared to us just trying in prior years to potentially enforce illegal fireworks from being used? Can you share about that?
Absolutely. Again, Mayor and Council, Chief Catherine McAlpine with the Police Department. So, in, in my opinion, in my 35 years coming to September, when it comes to fireworks, no matter what jurisdiction that I've worked, we're set up for failure from an enforcement, law enforcement perspective. I came from a city that had zero fireworks allowed, spent half a million dollars on enforcement efforts, only to basically feel like it's Beirut out there. And we would have firework enforcement officers working overtime for a week, and you, you just could not even scratch a dent. So, I come with that history of knowing when a city approves them, just, or, or bans them completely every year, that people disregard it, that, you know. And so, we, we have never made a dent at all, and really greatly disappointed people. So, coming to Tigard where it is on this day, but the expectations is that people will only use the approved and not the M80s and the, you know, the bottle rockets and all of that. It is like Beirut out here, and pockets everywhere. Generally, the first two years, we, we've had an event, and so it's always been a mandatory workday for the Tigard Police Department, with half the department working the event and the other half answering calls for service. Last year with COVID and going into this year with those, both of those events being canceled, we are, we are just, officers are taking it off. They are not signing up for the voluntary overtime. So, we have a DUI emphasis we like to do during the Fourth of July. We have nobody that wants to volunteer for that. I, I was willing to pay overtime for, specifically for fireworks, and again, there were no takers. So, what it looks like normally is, last year, we had 47 calls. That was the highest in my four years that we've been here, or three years that I've done it. This will be my fourth. 2019 was 48, so the hovers around there. In 2018, it was 37, and 2017, it was 38. So, that's about where it hovers. Now, those come in, the peak times, over half the calls come in around 9:00 and 10:00 o'clock. So, these aren't spread out over time. These all come in about the same time. But also during that time, we are handling domestics, you know, drunk drivers, intoxication, and of course, any crimes in progress. So, it is very much, if we can get there, we'll try and get there. And each year, we hardly ever get there or in time. And each year, when I report out to all of you, I acknowledge that we generally do not meet people's expectations. So, with that said, we are not gonna enforce our way out of this in any shape, but we still try. So, this year, we will bring in our graveyard officers four hours early, and they will be out there, three of them, because we only have three assigned to graveyard, four assigned to swing shift. And for those listening, swing shift is from 2:00 to midnight. Graveyard on a normal shift is 10:00 PM to 8:00 AM, but we'll bring them in four hours early. Those three officers will be dispersed out to handle fireworks complaints at that time. We do have the advantage of one light-duty officer who will monitor the radio, see the calls coming in, because the dispatch center does not dispatch these as a call for service. They are attempt to locate unless there is a, a significant threat that is occurring. So, that officer will pull that call, call the complainant back, get some more information, tell them we either are on calls, what they can expect. That'll be the first time we've ever done that, and we'll see if that touch point helps a little bit, just to keep people informed on what they can expect. This year, we also took all of our 2020 data where, where people called in and complained about, and we sent a letter informing them that we would have some extra patrols and that their address was, you know, pointed out last year. What we've heard back from that is, because it was a broad swath, they were like, it wasn't me, some were offended, and others, no acknowledgement. But again, we're just trying to be creative and remind people that we are out there and that we need their assistance. And, and that's, that's about it. And generally, as I end up usually reporting out to all of you after the fact, is what kind of calls those are. And again, when it comes up to those priority twos and ones that we're dealing with on a, on a holiday.
So, Chief, what is your professional recommendation? If we are looking at, considering an all-out ban, that you're not gonna necessarily be able to, I mean, what I'm hearing you say is, you're not gonna be able to enforce whatever we do.
No.
At least not particularly effectively. So, what's your professional recommendation? Do we do it anyway to make expectations clear? Do we, do we consider passing something that's more like harsher on people that are using illegal fireworks? That actually might be more effective. I don't know, but what, what is your professional recommendation?
Yeah, no, and I, and I appreciate you, you asking. First of all, I also want to commend you for getting together to even have the, the tough conversation, kind of on the final hour, and just acknowledging that. My professional opinion is, people are gonna do what they want to do. So, again, I've, I've seen it where it's absolutely illegal to do anything, and they do it. We ban it to this time. You might get people who will, that's, that, a smaller percentage of people. There are gonna be people who maybe even say fundamentally, you've just violated my rights, you can't do that, so now I am gonna do it. So, you're gonna get those folks, or just people who say, I'm gonna play the percentages, the police can't get here, I'm going to go ahead and lie in law. So you're going to get those folks or just people who say, I'm going to play the percentages, the police can't get here, I'm going to go ahead and lie in law. So what we don't, what the unknown is, is what percentage of compliance goes up? When you just banned everything and people say, for the sake and welfare of this community, I'm going to do my part. Is it just asking people to, to, uh, adhere to that behavior or by banning them, you get a certain percentage? And as, uh, I, I talked with the city manager, because I have historical data, the only thing I can do after the fact is. You know, what are those numbers? And was it effective, ineffective? You know, as we all talk about data and the scientific, that's as best I can say. So, um, human behavior dictates that it's just going to be, people are going to do it. Um, if we expect that we are going to then hold those people accountable. Uh, and at an enforcement level, I think even if we get to one or two calls. Again, if you're talking about illegal, making the contact, confiscating or getting them, educating them, that's going to take time. If, if twenty-five of these calls coming in are coming at the same time, you really have two officers or two different locations. And the numbers are quite small on, on our touch point of who we get to talk to. So again, just want to manage expectations of our, our, our ability to get out there and even. We want to be visible, we're going to, but it all also depends on what other type of calls, uh, that come in that we, we can't control. Um, hopefully, I'm not talking around that, um, but those are just, uh, some realistic beliefs that I have.
So would you, would you recommend that we enact a ban professionally? What, your professional recommendation?
Um, I, you know, yes. And I, and I'm going to tell you why. Again, uh, you, you know, I'm, I'm afforded the opportunity. To see the communication that all of you get and with people pleading and begging. It is symbolic, it is doing the right thing that I think our community is asking us to do. And, um, giving the inherent dangers, giving what they just experienced last summer. So, so it's, it may end up being symbolic and notional at best, but is that what they need and want to hear from all of you? So I am in support of it. I just want to be very transparent on the ex, managing the expectation that, that should we do this? That really, um, it is our community that has to step up and see the danger and the risk. And just say, you know, I'm going to celebrate the Fourth a little bit different this year.
Uh, city attorney Rahala, can you comment on whether we have the authority to both ban the use? I know we have the authority to ban the use of fireworks. Do we also have the authority to ban the sale of fireworks? City Attorney Rahala, you might want to turn your camera off because we're not able to hear you very clearly.
Okay. Uh, yes. So cities do have the ability to ban sale. Um, the cities that I know that have done that, I believe Eugene is the only one. And they didn't implement that until twenty twenty-two. Uh, so I would recommend, just based on the timing. That the longer-term discussion and if sales were going to be banned, that that would be something for next year's consideration. But yes, cities do have the ability to, uh, ban the use, the use and sale of fireworks.
Now, I believe the city of Portland bans the sale yesterday, correct? Or maybe that's new news for you. I don't know.
Um, that is new news for me, yes.
Okay. All right. So, uh, we've got a lot of professional input here. Um, I know that just to summarize, Counselor Newton and Counselor Shaw both have, I think, read the communications. And are generally in support of us taking action to, uh, or the council taking action to ban. But neither of them are here, uh, to vote. So the, um, city attorney Rahala, we have three. Voting members of council present. That means we have a quorum and to pass something. Do we need three votes or two votes?
Correct. Council needs three votes to pass. It's still the majority of the council regardless of how many people are here. So it'll be three votes to pass.
Okay. So with that in mind, uh, council president Lube, do you want to share? What you're thinking now that you've just heard all that? And then we'll go to youth counselor Nod for her comments.
Yeah, thank you. I, I appreciate, um, both the chiefs from TBFNR and our police chief being here. That, um, additional professional perspective is really helpful. Um, because we have received such an outpouring of community members asking us to ban. I was talking to someone, um, earlier today, and the last time that I received this much communication from people. Was when they were talking to us about our policing, um, after George Floyd's death. I've never seen the community come out so strongly, asking the council to take action on something. Um, so thank you to our community members who have reached out. I also was on a walk this morning with my family and I was looking at everybody's yards. And, you know, we have sprinkler systems in our yards and there wasn't a single yard that didn't have some sort of plant or tree. That was absolutely scorched and just dried out. And it really got me to thinking how dangerous any sort of spark is going to be. Um, this summer and especially right now, uh, with everything going on in the historic heat. And I know it's, it's really tough. We love fireworks. I particularly love sparklers. I think they're super fun to wave my little hand around. Um, but it's not something that I'm going to be participating in this year. The risk is just too great. And, you know, our, our first responders are stretched thin. And it's been an incredibly hard couple of years on them. And I think with everything going on that, um, for this year in this situation, that I support a ban on the fireworks.
Thank you. Uh, youth counselor Nog?
Uh, I'd like to start off saying thank you for all the professional input. My, one of the things I've noticed, yesterday I was driving to Estacada for my, um, drive test. And I already started seeing just smoke out of bushes. And it was a clear sign that Oregon's heat wave really impacted the potential fire hazards. That could happen. And just scanning social media to see what my, like, my peers' opinions would be. I saw that an overwhelming majority of the people supported a ban. And that they are understanding of the situation and that they are okay with celebrating the Fourth of July in a separate way. I know personally, talking to my parents, they are willing to compromise and do something else, go on a hike, talk to friends. Just small things to remind ourselves that, hey, fireworks aren't the most important thing always. So I would say that I am in favor of a ban.
All right, uh, counselor Goodhouse.
Uh, yes, I, um, I'm, I'm looking at the two sides of this. I mean, we're in a, we're in an extreme drought situation. We're in a situation where, a, a, as what everyone else has said, that we're. You know, our first responders, the, the drought, the heat wave, everything like that, we're in a, we're in a situation. But my other part is depending on what we do for a ban. I'm definitely against, um, you know, the fireworks, banning the fireworks sales. You look at a lot of nonprofits that, you know, how much do they put money into it if they can't sell that and recoup them? So I'm not against that part, but I'm looking at, it's again, with, with some of the things we've passed, we've looked at in the past. If we, we put a ban in place and we don't have the police enforcement to go out and patrol it. You know, do people then get upset with us saying, well, you, you passed a ban, but then we passed something we know we can't enforce? There is the part where the chief did say that by at least having the ban in place, then maybe it'll deter a lot. But you're also going to get a lot of people that, um, are going to do it no matter what. Um, I've even seen some things on social media where people said, well, what's the fine? I'll just factor that into my, my celebrations and do it. You know, do we do more of a peer pressure, um, situation where we already have such. Community support where by people saying, you know, we don't want to do it, is there going to be a big portion of the community anyways, is that going to do it? And they're going to look at their neighbors and tell them not to do it? And maybe we look at a situation, um, and one of the questions you raised. Was, you know, do we look at maybe with the legal ones, doing even more of an extreme fine on those than what there already is, um, to deter them? Um, but I'm just kind of looking at all sides and the air question is if we follow what like Twalton did. And we, we do a ban through the ninth, well, then do we just have a new Fourth of July that's on July tenth? I mean, July ninth is on Friday, so what's, what's stopping us saying our, our bans?
I, I think no matter what, what we do, if we conclude something should be done, July ninth makes no sense to me logically. I mean, if we're going to do something, we need to do it through what we expect to be the, um, height of the fire season. And the risk, and that's going to probably be through at least September, I would think.
Yeah. So, I don't know, I'm, 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 I'm looking at both sides. I, I, I just wonder if we pass it, how many citizens will be calling even more and saying, well, you, you, you know, the city council passed a ban. Why are you out there enforcing it? And as the chief says, we have all the other calls to enforce. We have, you know, maybe a bunch of people decided not to do fireworks, but they drink more or, or other things. How do we enforce all the other parts? So I'm, I'm looking at both angles. I don't know if my connection's going out or not. Um, it said bad connection.
We've heard, uh, your, your video was a little poor, but I think we, we got your audio, at least I did very, pretty well. Um, I want to add, based on that question or that comment, uh, I want to ask the chief from TBFNR. Um, a question if, if you don't mind. Um, thank you, Chief Hallman. Um, would there be any value to, uh, thinking about setting up a safe space? Where perhaps there was a, an engine ready to douse anything that were to happen, like down at Cook Park in the parking lot? Or, you know, I'm thinking maybe we could contact Washington Square and use some of their space that's way away from anything that's, uh, flammable. Um, is that something we should be considering or is a viable option? Or is that from both a resource perspective and it still poses a danger? I mean, is that even a, is that an idea that we should even be considering or is it, you can just tell me if it's a stupid idea, that's fine.
Mayor Snyder, it's not a stupid idea, but unfortunately, you already hit it. Our resources are already stretched thin. Uh, we've lost a large group of our resources to the wildfires that are occurring out near the Dalles right now. Uh, with the forthcoming, we're, we've got two professional fireworks shows that are occurring within our area. One in, uh, uh, North, uh, Plains and then also West Lynn just got approved today. So there's going to be two professional fireworks displays that we have to attach resources to. Uh, and, and with our normal call by Mr. Mayor, I just don't think we would have the resources. It's a wonderful idea. That would be something that maybe we should talk about next year. But with such short notice and the conditions we're under, I just don't think we could support it.
Thank you for the reality check there. Just trying to make sure we think through every possible option. To try to give our residents choices. Um, counselor Goodhouse, it seems as though you're, you're kind of looking at this from both perspectives. And it's going to take three votes to, to move something. So what are you, uh, what are you willing to support?
Going into this one, the big things I kind of, let me turn my video off just the way I, I don't have maybe a bad connection.
Sure.
One of the things I was thinking and I'll just see what everyone else thinks is really more leaning towards, um, a, a large, a lot, much larger, steeper fine on illegal fireworks. More of an education, um, and a, a kind of a self-patrolling, like self-community patrolling on fireworks. And basically saying, um, in a city communication, saying no fireworks until, you know, conditions are, you know, right. And then we finally announce as a city or from TBFNR when we feel like finally conditions are right. But I, 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 I just see that, you know, if we put a ban in place, that I don't see that. So I see more of a. Steeper, way steeper fine on illegals and a, and a education push. Um, to continue on just with, you know, any kind of flames or any kind of fireworks or any kind of that stuff.
All right. So, um, city attorney Rahala, can you comment on what we can do around? Uh, illegal, currently illegal fireworks? I know that's probably a criminal or criminal statute. But could we attach some sort of a civil, uh, civil thing to it that the city could enforce or do? Cause we can't, we can't make a criminal statute, can we?
Correct. We cannot make a criminal statute. Um, I don't know if Chief McAlpine can weigh in. On, uh, what the current fine is. Um, if it's a violation of our emergency ordinance or emergency resolution. Our code says that that is a class one civil infraction at two hundred and fifty dollars minimum fine. Uh, we do have the ability to, uh, to increase that. I believe it's up to a thousand dollars per violation. Um, but it would still continue to be a, uh, class one civil infraction and not, uh, increasing the penalties. Under statutes.
So we can't, we can't say we're going to have zero tolerance and it's going to cost ten thousand dollars for every single illegal firework you use? We don't have the ability to do that?
That is correct.
The most would be a thousand dollars, you're saying?
Yes, I believe that's what our code says.
So we could make it per, per item that's present, right? Or used?
Uh, so I believe that already is that, um, it's per. Um, let me pull up the exact language. It is per offense. Uh, and it does say that each day a violation is a separate offense. It does not say, uh, each item, but I, yes, I think it would be reasonable to interpret that each item that the police observed. Would be a separate civil infraction.
Okay. Um, so counselor Goodhouse, just so I'm clear, uh, would you be supportive of? Um, and I'm just trying to look for common ground here. So would you be supportive of a, um, using that maximum thousand dollars? Per, per item or per incident, um, for illegal fireworks, things that are illegal now?
Yes.
Okay. And would you be comfortable with that being in place through September?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so that, that's at least one area we can look at. Uh, sounds like council president Lube, I assume you would support that? I know you want more, but you would support that.
I don't, I don't think it's nearly enough. And I, you know, I think for those who said, what's the ban? And I'll just pay for it. I mean, I don't see the thousand dollars deterring people either.
All right. Um, so you don't sound like you're, you're not a fan of that proposal. So, uh, one of you, this is going to get really interesting because one of you is going to have to make a motion. And, and another one of you is going to have to second it. And if that doesn't happen, then I guess we're not going to move forward with anything from a process perspective. So, uh, city attorney Rahala, can you comment? Am I correct about that? It, whatever, one of the two council members that's present would have to move an item and the other counselor would have to second it?
Yes, that is correct. And if the motion does not get a majority vote, it fails. Uh, so it needs three votes. You would need three votes to do anything, otherwise the motion fails.
Understandable. We may not even get to a vote though, is what I guess I'm, where I'm getting at.
Yes, that is correct. And actually, I will say that that is exactly what happened in Beaverton last night. They did not, uh, they were split three-three and they were unable to make a motion as well.
Oh, they could, they didn't even get it to, they didn't even get to vote because they didn't have a second?
Uh, they decided that it was split three-three and that, um, there was no point in making a motion. So there was no motion made.
All right. Um. Counselor Goodhouse, do you want to try making a motion?
I was going to, unless I miss it, where, where do you stand? I mean, we, 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 we did our comments. Where, where are your thoughts on what you'd want to see?
So I'm taking the way to the police chief's, uh, recommendation pretty seriously. Um, I think if it deters some behavior, that it has some, uh, positive effect. I'm very concerned about what, um, Chief Hallman had to share. About the fire conditions, fire risk and just spark risk. Um, as I've thought more about it and looked at conditions around our community. And, you know, we have a very, uh, we're, we're, uh, I think lucky to have a community with a lot of trees. And a lot of, uh, green things usually, then a lot of those green things are brown and yellow right now. Um, and I think Chief Hallman also got me thinking about the fact that all it takes is one spark that may have been out for a while. Um, that ends up getting ignited with the right amount of oxygen. And could have been dormant and even put out with water to the story I told. I didn't really think about it that way, but he helped point that out. So I, I guess I'm just thinking, this is not a good time to be, uh, using these items. And, um, I think there may be an opportunity perhaps for, uh, the city's birthday in September. To perhaps, you know, hopefully if conditions allow to, um, maybe have a very large, uh. to perhaps, you know, hopefully if conditions allow to, um, maybe have a very large, uh, fireworks season during that time perhaps. Um, I, I feel like we've also explored every reasonable opportunity to try to, um, have a safe, uh, I mean, I, I feel like I've asked every question I can about how we could do this safely and I'm not, uh, seeing, uh, I'm not seeing a path forward where that's viable in the next week or two. I do think that whatever we do should be enacted through at least the end of August and probably through part of September. Um, and frankly, I think we're going to see unfortunately a very ugly wildfire season too, unless people have really gotten the message that this is not the year to screw around. Um, and that, you know, that's not probably going to happen directly in our community, but we'll probably get to breathe the results of it for a period of time. Um, so Counselor Goodhouse, I, I don't know if you have further questions about my thinking, but that's, uh, sort of where I'm at at this point.
So, and I, I, I thought from with you saying that, I mean, I, another thought just popped up and it was, it was kind of mentioned from what you're saying with what people emailed in. I mean, if we're saying we're, we're banning them in Tigard until, um, September, you know, what, what's stopping someone from, you know, popping over into unincorporated Washington County or pop over to Twelton after the ninth? What if we looked at something, I, I was, as Nirfath was thinking and I didn't bring it up is, what if we do a, a ban until the July 9th and then ask, write a letter to the governor's office asking, since we have borders and everyone from side to side, asking the governor to do, um, a statewide ban on these until August or Sep- or, or beginning of September? If we're looking at each community is doing something different and someone can cross lines from one side to the other side in different places. I mean, what's someone, stopping someone from buying them and just going into over to Beaverton and using them? Um, I mean, I, I, I could propose, um, I, I'd be fine doing a ban to, to July 9th and then with a letter of a recommendation to the governor to do a statewide ban until September 1st.
Okay, so that's, that's something we can talk about in just a moment. I see City Attorney Rahala's hand up and I want to get to her in a moment, but I also want to add one other piece of info that I, I failed to in, uh, include that I think is really relevant. It's, it's sort of ancillary to this, but I will tell you that the hospital system and the emergency medical services system has been taxed in this region in a way that it has never been. Uh, American Medical Response, the 911 ambulance provider in the metro area, with the exception of Washington County where Tigard is, uh, had the high, and I used to be a manager there, had the highest call volume in a 24-hour period than they have ever had. Um, hosp- our hospitals are full, uh, more full than they were during COVID peaks. Um, this is also not a time to be driving more emergency calls, I guess would be the point I would be making. Um, and so anyone that's injured, um, i- anyone that, that requires those resources that are from a preventable cause is just, um, you know, taxing a system that already is beyond what it's capable of. Um, City Attorney Rahala, you had your hand up.
Thank you, Mayor. I do just want to address the point about, uh, the governor's office. The governor's office has been asked, uh, to implement a statewide ban. She has worked with the state fire marshal and, uh, concluded that the state does not have the legal authority to do that. Uh, the fire marshal has statutory authority around issuing permits for firework displays and the rest really lies with the local jurisdictions. So Washington County does not have authority to ban, uh, within incorporated cities and neither does the state, uh, because of home rule authority. It is only the city of Tigard that can ban fireworks within its boundaries.
Do you agree with that legal assessment?
I do, yes.
All right. Uh, Counsel President Lube.
Yeah, I, I mean, to Counselor Goodhouse's points, I would actually argue the opposite of if we don't enact this ban and other local jurisdictions do, or, you know, Twelton decides to extend their ban, it's just inviting people to come into Tigard city limits and then raise our risk here.
Youth Counsel Nog.
I think one of the big things behind the ban is giving people an incentive to actually not do it. And I had an idea, I don't know how viable it is, but if there's some sort of raffle with, like, if you turn in your, uh, fireworks to the city, they'll give you a certain number of raffle numbers and then you'll like be put into this big Fourth of July raffle to kind of give people an incentive to like not even have fireworks as an option.
I, so that's a gr- an interesting and great idea. I had thought of, it's making me remember one of the ideas I had thought about too was whether we should offer to, um, essentially vendors from Tigard or who have been operating in Tigard, if we enact a ban, um, whether we should offer to, um, buy them all at wholesale or whatever they paid for them and then use them in the fall when it's safe to do so. Uh, maybe hand them out or sell them, whatever, whatever it might be. That was another thing I thought about for alleviating, uh, people's financial burden from this. So thank you for that. Um, what are, what are, Counsel President Lube, what do you think about that? Uh, it may be hard to figure out tonight, but, um, what do you think?
I think ways that we can incentivize, you know, to turn the fireworks in and, you know, maybe we could actually, if we can come up, um, and roll out ideas of ways that people can safely, um, celebrate in lieu of not being able to use fireworks, anything we can do, you know, I'm behind.
And Counsel Goodhouse.
So I would be, I'd be fine doing a ban through the ninth and then doing a program, come up with programs in the meantime to figure out what we can do to safe, you know, either buy them back or, or any of those things we've been talking about. Or safely do it or anything like that, so.
All right. So I'm hearing sort of consensus around a ban through the ninth. I would like to propose in addition to that, if you guys will think about this when you make your motion, uh, a ban through the ninth for everything, a ban through September for, uh, with a much higher fine for illegal fireworks at a thousand dollars per item. Um, and then, uh, direct staff to come up with a way that our community can celebrate safely, perhaps mitigate the financial costs and burdens of people and incentivize them to not use them to Youth Counselor Nog's, uh, perspective. Maybe we, you know, maybe we, for every firework turned in, we do give out a raffle ticket and then we pull a raffle ticket for, you know, 5,000 bucks or something. I don't know. Um, something, something like that. Um, staff, City Manager Reimer, if we were to enact the points that we're talking about and then we were to give staff direction quickly to figure out how people can safely celebrate along with a way of mitigating a financial cost for vendors, et cetera, is that something staff could, uh, work on between now and the ninth?
Uh, thank you, Mayor, and thanks counsel for a good conversation, um, for clarity on the, um, first points you made, absolutely. And then on establishing a program, obviously we need, needed to spend some time talking through that, what that looks like, what are the potential financial implications? How do we safely collect them ourselves? Um, so it's hard to give you a definite yesterday, but it's obviously something that we can, uh, talk about and follow up, uh, quickly with the council on.
Okay, who would like to make a motion? I'm supposed to, I'll just also share, I'm probably going to apparently be late to my, uh, poolside chat tonight. Um, so anyone that's watching now, we probably won't be starting that at 6:30. Does one of the members of the council, one of the voting members, sorry, Youth Counsel Nog, you can't make a motion either, but, uh, does somebody want to make a motion? Are you prepared for that?
I can, unless, unless Counsel President, you want, Lube, you want, okay. So I, I make a motion to ban all fireworks in the city of Tigard to July 9th. And to increase the fine for illegal fireworks to a thousand dollars going through September 1st? Is that what we decided?
Yeah, per item is what, what I had said.
Per occurrence, or is that what it is?
Yeah, per occurrence or per item that is confiscated.
Yeah, per occurrence.
Uh, I'll second the motion.
All right. It's been mo- moved and seconded. Uh, City Attorney Rahala, you want to give us some guidance?
Can you hear me still or am I out?
Uh, we, we lost you if you were still making a motion.
Still making a motion. I didn't know if we need to conclude part of the motion to recommend staff to come up with a program, um, with either a safe use or buyback program.
I don't think we need that in this motion, but that's staff direction, I think.
Um, okay.
But let's verify that. City Attorney Rahala is going to speak anyway, and then Chief McAlpine.
Yes, so counsel, to clarify, the motion is to approve Resolution 2126. And then these components would be added as elements of the council's, of the city's response, uh, under the emergency declaration. So the overarching motion is to approve Resolution 2126.
With the specifics that Counselor Goodhouse just outlined?
Exactly, yes.
Okay, Counselor Goodhouse, you want to add that to your motion?
I add to the resolution to increase, uh, the fine to illegal fireworks to a thousand dollars per occurrence through September 1st.
I think the motion needs to be to approve Resolution 2126 with the content that you described.
I move to approve Resolution 2126, sorry, I don't have it for me, uh, with the res- with adding to it to add the fine for illegal fireworks to be a thousand per occurrence through September 1st of 2021.
And the ban through July 9th.
And the ban through July 9th.
Okay. Go ahead.
I'll second the motion.
All right. And Chief McAlpine, you, uh, we've now got a motion on the table that has been seconded. Chief McAlpine, you have more to share?
Thank you, Mayor. Not, not necessarily to share, but a clarification while I had, uh, City Attorney Rahala on there and just because we have talked about it and where we would cite under and, uh, uh, City Attorney Rahala, in my understanding, uh, continues to September, uh, provisions, we would still cite under TMC 7.74. That's where the thousand dollars would be set at. Um, and it's not, we're not going to do the ORS. Is that, is that your understanding and per our conversation on the side?
That is correct. So the, um, the extension or the emergency declaration would have to extend to that date and we would cite as a violation of the emergency declaration as to a specific firework offense.
Thank you. With that clarification then, uh, counsel, no, we, we would, we know what our, um, uh, enforcement authority and what it lies.
Thank you. City Manager Reimer, are you wanting to add something to from the staff?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, it is my understanding from Chief Hallman that TVFNR already does have a program in place for, to safely accept and dispose of fireworks. So we'll have a further conversation with them, um, looking at developing a program or at a minimum, getting the word out to our community, uh, that that, uh, program is available.
All right. Then, um, the other comment I want to make is just that we need to be prepared if this passes, are we prepared to push the messaging on this right away? I'm hoping, uh, the staff can get on that, get a press release out and get social media pushed quickly like tonight.
Yes, Mayor, absolutely. It'll be our intent to push this message immediately. I see our communications manager is on, uh, as well as obviously other teammates. And so we'll do our best to message for it as a safety.
All right. So we have a motion on the table. City Recorder, can you please read the number and title of the resolution?
Resolution number 21 dash 26. A resolution of the city of Tigard ratifying an emergency declaration to take steps deemed appropriate by the Tigard City Council to mitigate the risk of fire danger as amended.
And a roll call vote.
Counselor Goodhouse.
Yes.
Counselor Newton. Counsel President Lube.
Yes.
Counselor Shaw. Mayor Snyder.
Yes. All right. So Resolution number 21 dash 26 passes three to zero. City Attorney Rahala, that's how we should record this, correct? Three to zero on the vote?
Yes.
Two, two not present? Okay?
Correct, yeah.
So, motion passes and, uh, thank you all. Staff, please let us know when we need to have the discussion or when you're prepared to have the discussion about, uh, what types of programs we can offer and how to move them forward and, uh, how people should be celebrating and can be celebrating creatively via different means.
Absolutely, Mayor.
All right. Is there a motion for adjournment?
I move for adjournment.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. City Reporter, please conduct a roll call vote.
Yes.
Counsel Newton. Counsel President Lube.
Yes.
Counsel Shaw. Mayor Snyder.
Yes. All right, we are adjourned. Good night, Tigard. See you in a few minutes, Tigard.
Good night.